Well, welcome everybody to today's finance meeting. It is noon on Wednesday, November 2nd. And in the boardroom are I'm calling myself and we may be joined by other board members. And maybe we'll just go around the room and let everybody quickly introduce themselves for the record for the recording.
Andy Rapp, the senior director of the office of management and budget.
And Paul and Boardman.
Derek Ryan, superintendent.
Rob Holland, that's the CEO.
Ben Gustafson.
C A L.
Jim Anderson, chief finance officer.
For Cochrane, senior director of finance.
Kathy Moffett, director of admin projects.
Amanda Foster, executive assistant to the school board. And Katie.
Doctor stock I see online.
Yes.
We'll see who else shows up. Okay. So we have three items on our agenda for today, the first one being the Oasis count and revenue update. So Jim and Andy. Take it away.
Okay, Andy, go ahead.
So we're still getting that and working out through with our records management team that does the Oasis count, making sure that we get that. The biggest increase we see right now is within our intensive needs students. Taralisha says about 1,083 is what the protection or the count was as of today, we budgeted on 1,019. So that'll be a significant increase and we're still trying to figure out what the difference is on the regular ADM correspondence counts, but hopefully we can get you guys an update in Board Connect on Friday.
It's a little more complicated this year because the pre-K A A D M when they passed the REEDS Act only applies to the pre-K that's not supported by federal funds or state grants. And so it's, it's going to take a little bit to figure that out. Every year the state certifies the Oasis count in January. So even what we provide in the next couple of weeks will be projected. And then they go back through all the intensive needs, all the new ones, and they go back and forth with special education and validate those. They go through every name in our database. Some always are registered in more than one school district in the state. Maybe they were in Raven and they took a class with us and we get priority on F T E over Raven. But these, it generally takes till the end of January before we have the final certified Oasis count. So the numbers that Andy does come up with will keep modifying over the next couple of months as we work through what's a normal process, only complicated by the pre-K A D M addition this year.
Thank you.
To us online as members, Bellamy and Wilson have joined us. Thank you. Any board members have any questions regarding the Oasis update? I guess, do we have a ran? Could you just remind us where we're at roughly with our overall enrollment, which is?
Andy, do you have it pulled up?
No, I think we're around five or 600 above what we projected overall. Some of those are going to be correspondent students and it's going to be money that'll be due to like family and frontier. I think family partnership actually had a large increase versus what they had projected and then built the budget around. So a lot of those are really correspondence students. We are above our projections.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll move right along to item number two, budget discussion.
So I, I thought this would be a good time to continue some of the budget discussions an hour and a half yesterday. I think we had more than an hour and a half worth of discussion that we've tried to jam in there. I thought this would be a good chance for follow-on questions. I, I know by the end of the night, it was, it was very difficult to get a feel as to whether anything was supported at any level from programs through closures, through the repurpose plan. So it's something that we could talk about it today and and try to get a feel for which, which way the board is at least going forward. And if there's areas where you think more information's needed in the next one or two board meetings on certain areas, if we can narrow those down, that's very useful. I don't think we have enough board members at this meeting today to get a quorum for official guidance, but any input we get is useful because we know that we have until 20 December. And by then we need to know what are the schools in the school district that we build a budget around? What are the programs that may or may not have significant modifications that we can build the budget around? So the budget book that you get, as we do every year, we'll do one-on-ones with board members or sometimes up to three board members depending on your schedules. We always talk to board members before it goes public. But we really don't want to surprise the board with something that we've never talked about that you, that you didn't know we were looking at. When you see that budget book at the beginning of February, I, I will say that this whole plan is a house of cards. And if you want to put fingerprints on one thing and change just one thing, it probably will have impacts on a lot of other things. So the more we can have those kind of discussions about, do you want to support early? It, it will reduce the number of surprises in February.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I respect that this is incredibly complicated and your team has done an enormous amount of work. And none of these solutions are pleasant. And I think that that's probably, you're probably getting a lot of board member distaste for all of these choices.
Well, and from the community and from legislators who have been calling us and wanting meetings with us because you know, the, the reality is we know because most of us in the room, or at least several of us have brought these up in the past. And when it was just one of them, when it, that was the only one because we didn't have a big deficit. It filled the board room for three or four boardroom meetings in a row to the point where the board realized that must be the one program that we can't cut. And there's nothing on this list that we haven't looked at before. And every, some of these we have reduced before only to bring back sometimes within hours, sometimes within weeks. And it, and it is, and we do actually recognize, I don't look at this and say, oh, sixth grade to middle school, two and a half million dollars. All of these things really are important to somebody and it's really is the reason that they wake up and come to work every day. And when you invite a director to come in and say, hey, can you tell me about the importance of your program? We expect every director in the district to say, this is the one program that's the most important program in the district. Because so does every parent of those children getting that unique experience and so does every teacher. So we could call every director in and frankly, I think Dr. Jared would get rid of them if they didn't believe that their program was the most important program they should worry about in the district. But that's why this is difficult. We, we know for months, I, I, I think I've repeatedly said that a lot of your feedback is going to be any program of mine, any school but mine, but go ahead and cut admin. And honestly, that's why we've been working admin for a while and you'll see it in December that we've looked at software, the number of users, the frequency of use, the cost of continuing this, is there a better option that's cheaper? We've looked at a lot of different things from positions to everything else. But why didn't we have to bring that up early? Because we had to give the board time and space with the community for these things that are emotional. You're never going to fill a boardroom if you say, hey, tonight we're going to talk about admin cuts. It'll be, it'll be empty. Those security guards would be bored. But, so we knew that we had to get things like school closures out early, ignite immersion sports, all these other things. That's why, that's why we developed a timeline on this. Because there shouldn't be a surprise to the community. There can't be a surprise to the community. And, and sure, we don't have all the information on everything because we're still working all of it at the same time. But you know, the comment last night, they're doing admin last. Now, can you, I couldn't even imagine a world where we announce school closures the week before Christmas break.
Yeah.
And, and then we come back on February 1st and say, let's vote. I mean, that, that was not, that would, that would be political. It would be, I mean, everything wrong would be about that. But admin come up with those in January for the last 500,000 and everyone would be happy. But not with school closures and not with anything else that we've tried to give you weeks and months in some cases to talk to your community.
Oh, I emailed a set of specific questions to, for more clarification and I'm happy to voice them.
Sure.
So.
I am ready.
That's okay. Okay, so it looks like that I don't know that I actually saw here that consolidating the E C T program, the ACT program, that means putting it here at where Highland Academy is.
It is. Well, it could be. It's, it's tied to whether Clatt Elementary would close or not. And like every other school here, you will have a group like we did last night with Clatt. And that's what I kind of meant by the house of cards. We, we, we could have put that the ACT program's going to be here. But we also have to look at three or four other places we can put it because we don't know what the board's going to decide on December 20th. And whether it's here or whether it's at East High or whether it's somewhere else, the concept of consolidating the ACT program, reducing bus routes, getting them near businesses for job opportunities. All of that is more important than the location when it comes to the ACT program.
So in my mind, as I was thinking this morning, I drove mentally from the Ed Center to Clatt. I thought it's a long ways away. Does public transportation serve?
20% of Highland Academy students are within walking distance. 20%. But when we talk to the principal at Highland, Andy's pretty confident that she's going to have an opportunity to pull students at a, at a bigger, better building that's more designed and actually looks like a school to be able to increase their population. If you look at Highland, they've really suffered through COVID and just immediately before COVID and trying to grow and being unable to grow. Part of that's the environment when you walk through the door as to whether, does this look like the perfect school for, for my child? And putting them in a location that looks like and was designed for education, we think puts them at a better opportunity. So last year, only because they had federal funds, did they have a $31,000 plus dollar fund balance rollover, the lowest of every charter school. Financially, Highland won't be solvent unless enrollment significantly increases because we'll be running out of federal dollars. Or we move them to a place where they don't have to pay 375,000 a year for lease. And so that's why we looked at Highland. And when it came to act, if you know, again, if, if every single one of these, if one of them gets cut, then it may very well impact what we would recommend for all the other buildings. Because we kind of have some priorities. We've got Alaska Native as a priority. The board's goal of reading is a priority. And guardrails for us, right? So we have to work on reading. And, and all of these things kind of will bounce against board decisions. And every time it's not the whole group, then another decision would change.
Okay, thank you. Um. So I guess one of the follow-up questions was maybe ACT would move here, maybe it would go to East High School. We didn't really, we haven't heard a follow-up discussion about the Ed Center building as well.
That's a good question. So we haven't briefed it because when we look at elementary schools and you look at the amount of professional development you need and you look at how big the parking lot has to be in the boardroom and everything else, it's going to be some significant capital. If you were to move the Ed Center to two elementary schools, which is possible in round two.
Like to divide it?
It would have to be divided. You couldn't make it fit. Or if the board says, we're not going to close any schools, then we're very likely going to come back. If you say no sixth grade to middle school and no school closures, then we would probably come back with we're going to recommend closing a middle school and turning the middle school into an Ed Center and it's going to need a renovation for a period of many, many months to be able to relocate the Ed Center because you can't have an elementary-sized parking lot and have a scoreboard meeting where only 30 people can talk. I mean, we, we see how full the boardroom gets and when they come into the atrium. If we're gonna, if, if we're going to try to continue to invite the public, it's going to be construction either way. Two elementaries hypothetically, square footage wise, probably would work. Or one middle school with a bigger parking lot with some internal building, a boardroom out, construction. But I, I, I didn't really think it was worth putting a middle school on this list when the middle school was only going to occur if we didn't close the elementary schools and if we didn't do sixth grade to middle school because there are, all of these multi-year plans are so, they get complicated by not knowing what you're even going to do this year. So it's hard to project year three, when I see the Ed Center moving to a specific middle school. Well, that may be out the window on December 20th. So that's why I didn't add one more chart to bring more people here for something that might hypothetically occur. I will tell you that it saves us four and a half million a year if we close a middle school and move the Ed Center, not counting the construction and/or we renegotiate the contract, which we will be doing very soon to try to get cheaper rates. Or close two more elementary schools and we decide to put the money into those and split the Ed Center, but I honestly, I don't know what the board's going to decide two weeks from now. So I, I don't know that I can give more information.
I was just going to ask, one of the things that has changed even as we lost students before I saw A B C and other folks are going, but we see Anchorage continually grow at a slower rate. And this year, nobody's saying that. Any, does anybody say it, say 10 years out? But right now what I'm hearing is we, we perceive decline and we don't always see a change.
You know, when I called the state demographer, Shannon's talked to the munis demographer. I think most demographers are uncomfortable going more than five years out. Because all it would take is Pebble Mine to open up or open up a LNG pipeline or expand Anmar drilling, bringing some of the oil companies or other mineral wealth companies back into Anchorage for us to reverse directions. So if, when you go 10 years out, you may as well go 20. And if you say, I'm going to go 2% decline for the next 20 years. And by the time we get there, Anchorage is going to have minus three people on Fourth Street. I mean, the math, the math just draws the straight line that's meaningless. But if you go five years out, you can go with the birth data from this year, plus the P F data from this year. And you can somewhat confidently predict, not counting the people who leave Anchorage, that that's going to be pretty close when they hit kindergarten. But when you go to fifth grade, what is the future of fifth grade going to look like? Do you really keep going minus 2.3 every year? It, it, so I don't think you will find any professional demographer give you a number for 10 years out.
I mean, I don't, I wouldn't hear anybody thinking that Anchorage is just going to dry up with her away.
I don't.
But, but yeah, where it's going to settle.
No, Phoenix is going to dry up and with her away. We'll be fine. Phoenix, Arizona. We have water. We have melting glaciers. We're going to be just fine.
And I just want to make note that member Don Lee and member Jacobs have joined.
Thank you both for joining.
So you'll see, that's why we stopped at five. Because otherwise you're just a pessimist of the very worst kind.
Well, usually when I saw everybody where something happens to everybody.
Right. We've all seen it. It's been a bust.
A drop of another 2% a year for the next couple of years is roughly 1,000 students and it's roughly 10 million more decline.
Thank you. I mean, in 2019, no one would have predicted that we would lose 4,500 students when we closed schools for COVID.
Yeah.
You probably never hear Andy or I ever project anything over five years for that reason.
Any questions from board members online at this point?
And I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Members Jacobs and Don Lee, we might have a full, we might have a full body here today.
Yeah, everybody.
But member Higgins, okay. Um, I mean, I have additional questions. Are there any other additional questions? Okay, could we talk a little bit more about the preschool hubs? Could you help me understand or help other board members understand if we're talking about Northwood, for example, as a preschool hub? I think we heard last night it has seven preschool classrooms already there. So.
That's Nanaca Valley, I think.
Okay, so they both have seven right now.
Okay.
So are they, would they, under the month, under this plan that we received, would they be be sort of mag, they're going to be having, there will be more preschool programs within each hub or would they stay at that?
So part of the plan that looks easy on PowerPoint, when you look at this one slide that says this school's going to close and they're going to go to two schools and everything looks easy, but it's not, right? So we have to look at all the gaining schools and we spent all day Sunday going through schools and going through classrooms of where all the different special programs are for the gaining schools. And then we looked at what programs need to move to make room for the school. And Shannon had his laptop with him. So when we finally found glitches like at Willowah, where we knew we had to move all the pre-K programs, she has a couple L S L and S L C programs. And when, when we did the math on the fly, we were able to look at the zoning and look at just north of, of the street, there was about 90 kids that were actually closer to a different school, which is why we added Tarmigan. Because on that north boundary, there was 90 kids closer to Tarmigan than they were to Willowah originally, but they were in the zone. And then we knew, we had to move the, we had to move the pre-K, plus we had to move the 96 kids that were in this, this area up to Tarmigan. And now we need a place to move those pre-Ks programs. So then you start looking at, where do we move the pre-K programs? Well, when you're Campbell, a really close place for Campbell to move their pre-K would be Northwood that already has seven classes. And why would you relocate seven if it's a, an optimally performing pre-K program where now you can just add on to it and, and have those supports permanently stationed at a school? And so I, I honestly could spend days doing nothing but drawing charts on the potential possibilities of all the different programs having to move around to make space for six schools that are closing. But every gaining school also had to lose something to be able to pick up the gainers. And you look at Bertwood A B C, they're not all going to Homestead. We don't know where the S L C programs are going to go, but we know that they're going to go somewhere. And we're still working possible options. And we also know that for each of these, there's multiple contingencies. But if you want to put a reading, if you want to put a pre-K expert in a place where they can help the most kids and help the most staff help the most kids, then the pre-K academy looked like a good option. And then the next step to have an pre-K academy is now it has its own building. It has an entire building full of pre-K. It's got the supports. And now we can give it a school code. And if we give it a school code, then at least it's generating some revenue. But we got to be able to do the math to be able to confirm whether it generates enough to make up for it or not. And then we got to wait for that marijuana tax. If that gets approved, which it looks like it will, and then whether that could be used to find some of those pre-K academies and and there's, there's still just like this long list of unknowns that are all based on things like the marijuana ordinance passing. And then once it passes the assembly, does it pass? If it goes for the voters, do they pass it? So in the meantime, Andy and I will be looking at grants, we'll be looking at Jim Raffin, we'll be looking at the .5 A D M that Alaska REEDS Act gave us. And then we have to separate all those kids that are in hybrid programs that get special ed funding because they don't count towards the REEDS Act A D M. So it's, we're not, we're not there yet and we probably need months for some of these to be able to say, this is exactly what next year is going to look like. And it's not going to happen between now and December 20th. In fact, between now and December 20th, we're expecting some of the stuff that we recommended to not just not get approved, but to be put into a you know, bucket of, we really don't want to hear this again, but the reality is, the more one-time money we use, the more everything we're showing you is going to look just like this on 27 July next year. Depending on what the legislature does. And no one can predict until after the November 8th election, even what direction we think next year is going to go. So that's the best answer I can give you.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, go ahead, member Jacobs and also member Higgins has joined us.
Thank you, member lessons. So a question, I think for Mr. Anderson. Yesterday was, if it wasn't the first, it might have been the, one of the first occurrences where the bird, you know, on the record in one of our work sessions that were at least starting to chart out, you know, a year from now, that a second round of school repurposings or closures may occur. I understand that there's a couple dozen decision points in between now and when that recommendation would take place. But I guess I'd like to first check my understanding that that's the administration's prediction as to where plans might go. And then do we know, I mean, is this, would a second round, do we, do we have any estimated number of campuses that might be included in the second round? Can we make any educated guess if we assume in a, in a scenario where the board were to approve the current six and should enrollment decline based on the data that we have? And should no action be taken by the legislature to address education funding, given that set of variables? Can we assume it would be another six? Can we assume that it would be one or two? Would it look like addressing the entire allotment of the 18 schools that we have at 65% capacity or less? Is that data point or estimation available at all?
So to give you an idea of how successful in terms of efficiency, and I get the other part. In terms of efficiency, if we were to close six schools, we would generate nine elementary schools at a three-section level. Which we have very few of those unless you're looking at someone like Inleview, so 134% or any of the schools near 100%. So we would generate nine new schools at three-section level, which means they're they would be less impacted by teachers to call in sick in terms of substitutes and the ability to somehow educate children that day and all of those other things that are advantages from speech and language pathologists through all the other related services. And then when you look at the next round, the next round obviously depends on are we going to close six? Are we going to move sixth grade to middle school? If we're not going to move sixth grade to middle school, we haven't even done that math yet. But if we did move sixth grade to middle school and we didn't close a middle school and move the Ed Center to it, then the number would be somewhere in the three to six is where we would be looking. But we haven't done all the math yet. Because we're still working these, but and that's only hypothetical, right? Because we started to do the transportation analysis. We got to look at any special programs. We haven't done that level on round two. And the reason we haven't done that level on round two is Shane and I are already working on starting to roll out the school start time change in January. So I'm, I'm kind of, we're kind of focusing our efforts on finalizing the information needed for these six to make those decisions. Knowing that in the month of January, you're going to start hearing about school time, school start times and, and studies. And that's going to sync with what Rob and Heather are working at with Transfinder on trying to reduce the number of overall routes. And, and so it's probably realistically, it'll be July before we legitimately look at round two by name.
Member lessons, can I just have a follow-up comment?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate that context, Mr. Anderson, and that's helpful to have at least a ballpark. Thank you. So I, I appreciate that context, Mr. Anderson, and that's helpful to have at least a ballpark. Again, if we, you know, have those specific data points locked in, which I know isn't a sure thing at this point. I hope that, maybe not to this specificity, but I hope that at least that a second round will make logical sense at this point, given everything we know. I hope that that fact makes its way into our town halls. I spoke to this a little bit yesterday, but in my interactions with the public and viewing testimony and reading written testimony, I think that there's that missing perspective, that there's an assumption that six closures is kind of the end of the conversation and our community needs to be prepared and needs to understand to the best extent possible that we're not just talking about six. And, you know, whether it's an enrollment issue or a funding issue, that there's a longer conversation that's going to have to be had. That, that I think needs to be more widely disseminated. So that's my ask.
Right. Shane and I have already talked, we're gonna continue calling it round one. And, and letting them know that decisions that can't be made on round one roll into other round twos and potentially around three or four. I mean, when, when you look at, you know, we, I've now been at town halls for four school closings, two from the earthquake, two real closings, and you know, I've never seen a town hall where everyone shakes your hand on the way out and thanks you for providing the information because they, they all legitimately deeply care about their one school and really think it should be a different school. And that's gonna be the theme of the public comments we get. So we do plan on making sure that they understand it's not a threat towards them because the school board can choose what they want in terms of decisions on the number. It'd be difficult at this point to change the name of a school because we haven't done the work, we haven't done the math. But it's not gonna stop unless, you know, we have to make up for five thousand less kids right now. And we know that we're losing another five hundred and fifty per year, looking at birth rate data. And, and so we are gonna make the best fact and logic-based recommendations. And, and we know that every one of them is, is is not gonna be a welcomed thing by anyone going to our schools. They're all great.
This is more of a specific, one more specific question that I had regarding some materials we received. If PIDEA moves out of Central and into CLAT, and Central has more space, what happens at Central?
So if PIDEA moves out and we do the sixth grade to middle school, if we kept the current boundaries, Central still remains at fifty-four percent capacity.
Turning into a sixth or eighth model?
If it, if all of our, all of our elementaries were to go to K five and the current boundaries don't increase the capacity at Central. So we know that once that decision's made, we're gonna have to look at rebounding those other schools to put more into Central. Central happens to also be another place potentially where other, other programs could be centralized as well. But the sixth grade to middle school decision is kind of preventing us to go to that round two where we will or will not put something in Central. We, having gone through with Rob and Shannon and elementary and secondary, some schools already in the last ninety-six hours, we probably can't move every sixth grader to middle school next year. It's probably gonna be a couple of years at least and maybe three. We still got a little more work to do. So the decision on Central is probably two years out, depending on or decision on sixth grade to middle school, but we're gonna have to re-look at rezoning those areas because you are pushing sixth graders into schools that are already full or will be full. And so now you've gotta push the other way into Central and Mirror Lake both. Because Mirror Lake is another, it's six, low sixties on capacity and they have the same struggles as Central with the numbers of electives and those kind of opportunities they can provide as a result of that.
All conversations, questions?
Carlos has some technical issues.
Okay. Could you explore, because I'm curious and maybe I don't fully understand it. So thinking about, I'm supportive of moving sixth graders to middle school pedagogically, developmentally. I just think that it's the right thing to do. Okay. But what is the, I mean, but there's a cost, right? What I hear is that we need to eliminate the middle school model in order to be able to make that happen.
It costs more.
It's simply, what is the cost?
It always costs more. Because when you hear that a teacher has five planning periods by their contract and that's elementary through high school, every teacher gets hypothetically five planning periods a week or we pay them if they miss one. Also in the contract. At middle school, it's not in the CBA. It was a committee that formed after the last, or maybe the one before contract was signed with AEA where we, we put in the contract that we would form a committee and I don't know, I assume you were probably on it.
I was on the committee as a high school principal, actually, even though I didn't, because I'd just come from middle school.
And so middle, as a result, I guess it was an agreement or a joint agreement, they get not just the five planning periods, but the five team periods. When every teacher gets five team periods a week more, you have to hire someone to fill those five blocks of instruction for every single teacher in the building that week. So what it really means when we say it costs more is they have more teachers. They have more teachers because there aren't any periods where we let children namelessly walk down the hall without a classroom, right? I mean, we hope not. Try not to. I'll let Sven take that one if we do.
So, so so like a sixth grade, sixth grade, right? That is taking more PTR than the sixth grade at elementary. Right?
Well, I mean, there's also the, the difference in that PTR number. We're doing middle schools at a thirty-one point two five, thirty fifty-five PTR. An elementary sixth graders, you're at twenty-six or twenty-seven.
No, it takes more FTE.
To fill the day.
To do the sixth grade at middle school than it does.
Well, no, because we're staffing with smaller class sizes. At elementary schools, we're staffing.
I mean, currently.
Yeah, currently, elementary sixth graders are at twenty-six, twenty-seven PTR. And the middle school sixth graders are at thirty, thirty point two five. But they get the extra planning time. So I think it's actually fairly close to the, to the same staffing that you would need at elementary at twenty-six versus middle at thirty or thirty-one.
Until you decide to move, it, it really is planning periods. Anytime you hear a planning period, if you have ten teachers and each of them has five hours a week, then you gotta hire somebody to fill fifty hours. If you have twenty teachers at five hours a week, then you gotta hire enough people to, to fill a hundred hours of additional. And that's, that's why it costs more people.
And I just, so maybe we can drill down a little bit more. So assuming we moved to an entire sixth through eighth middle school, I must say, middle school model, to middle school being, being filled by sixth through eighth graders. There is what, two and a half or three million dollar difference in cost?
Three to four.
Three to four. To maintain the middle, to maintain and apply the middle school model to sixth through eighth.
I don't think there's a whole lot of cost because you're pulling them out of the lower class size. But they have more planning time.
Where you lose is, is all the, the different electives and everything else, if you don't increase.
But also first you have the cost reduction of sixth grade band and orchestra.
Well, you have the two and a half million from sixth grade band and orchestra, right?
You say two and a half million dollars by ending sixth grade band and orchestra.
But not quite two and a half million because we haven't done the math to figure out how many kids are gonna take music now in sixth grade, middle school, if they never had fifth grade band and orchestra. And I will tell you that once this publicly gets discussed, that I talked to all the music teachers during a, a thing last week. They're gonna come back to the board immediately, push for a fifth grade band and orchestra. Because they are passionate and they do care and they would rather teach at elementary than they would teach at middle school. But really, it starts with their passion toward it. So, you know, over the years, we added a lot of things to the district when money was available or when grants were available. And, but now we've lost so many kids with declining population, it's you either right-size your infrastructure to gain efficiencies on the instructional side and the money side. But I would say six, the sixth grade move is equally about efficiency for guys like Sven than it is for Andy and I.
Go ahead, member Bellamy.
Yeah, just a couple of comments really. I, I do support moving sixth grade to middle school. And for many reasons, some have already been said. But I think when we talk about, just for clarity, are we eliminating or are we redesigning? Are we getting rid of everything about middle school or are we trying to redesign it? So are we talking, because I, I hear, I hear the word eliminate, which means it's done, goodbye. But it comes with some great programs or, or at least practices. So what, what, what is our position on that? I mean, I, I just need to understand, because I'm not for eliminating middle school. But I am open and willing to redesign it, to redefine it.
So I, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. If not, um.
There's a, there's a. I'm sorry, Ms. Bellamy. This is Sven Gustafson. There's some things kicking around right now and looking at maybe going, having some form of PLCs across all the divisions to be able to take up some of that time that is lost at, at middle school, but then also gain some with elementary, trying to do some efficiencies there. And that's one thing kicking around. If, if the middle school model was to go away, I've, I've done twenty years in the middle school model college. Andy here and we, you know, there's, there, there's things that will be lost, of course.
I know.
But, but I think that, you know, if we can redesign some of the stuff that we're doing, you know, if that, that comes up, I mean, we've had this conversation, goodness, five or six times in my career at this, you know, at the school board level and I don't know if Mr. Doctor Stock can answer some of that. I think that.
Hello, everyone. I hope you can understand me because of my voice. So there's a couple of things that go into this. One, Sven's already mentioned. That is the, the, looking at some alternative ways of providing collaborative time, even maybe the whole district could benefit. That was something at our board retreat the last time.
Yes.
The school board was very interested in trying to support our staff with, with ways to help them with all the training needs. So that was well appreciated. I think that'll be one piece of it. And there were a lot of discussions this morning in our team meetings on that. So more information to come later on how that could support. Like Sven said, it won't be the same. But secondary is doing some really serious looks at multiple types of schedules that might be used, a variety of things that could be combined with middle school and high school looks at scheduling. So I think to go back to Mr. Anderson's comments, you know, there's this, he called it a house of cards. I guess I'll call it kind of a series of decisions that have to come in order, right? There's certain ones that have to be made and then they influence others and they influence others, but it won't be the same. The middle school model, as everyone calls it, won't be the same. But I can tell you, having worked in three states now over forty-two years, everyone calls their stuff the middle school model and it looks different in every middle school you walk into. The one thing that's the same is some form of time to collaborate with your colleagues. That's, that's one thing. There's lots of other things that middle school experts would tell you it must include. But having worked in many places, it doesn't always look the same. So to answer your question, we won't be able to do everything we've been doing, but hopefully we'll be able to do some of the things we've been doing.
Okay. But I, I, I thank you for that. I, I just know that when we talk about eliminating something, it's like gone, but we are in I, I just think that there are that we should be, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're eliminating the model, that I get, I, I mean, I, I get it, but for me, I, I would rather speak in different terms of reimagining it, redesigning it, whatever that is. So because we will, because there are some things that can be done in a more traditional middle school setting that are beneficial for, that, that are best practices for those in the middle.
I agree. I just know from the history that the true passionate middle school advocates who live and breathe it.
Yeah.
They have a very particular way of how, what they think middle school model is and anything different than that's not middle school model.
And I'm, I'm one of those old school principals who fought the traditional middle school, uh, traditional high school for the middle. So it really is a stretch for me to imagine sixth grade in the middle, but I have, in my research and in my experience, I think, I think that's something we probably should have done a long time ago. And and, but we are, we're still holding on to giving everybody what they want. And we just, we just can't do that. We can't, it, it is just impossible to do. Not that I feel any less or, you know, I'm not hard-hearted, but the reality is we, we can't, we, we've got to right-size this district and we've got to do it as best we can in knowing that any decision could cause a calamity. I mean, I don't know all the ins and outs. I don't, but I do trust the people who are bringing this information to us to have covered every single base. My questions are for clarification. It's not to change the decision that's been made, but I need to be able to process it for me and then explain it to everybody else. So I thank you guys.
I'll add in my own definition of middle school, which to me has always been about being able to put kids and teens within the core subjects. The, the, the core of it, to me, it was always that kids that weren't ready to be part of a thousand-person student body had a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty team that they were part of. And, and we found it going, that if you ask kids where they went to school, they were more likely to give their team name than they were to say Goldenview Middle School. They really identified with that small group. And in a lot of our schools, that's, that's already kind of falling apart, usually masters first, then it goes off-team. And just as you cut staff a little bit here and there, you lose the ability to schedule like you're talking about. This becomes, you don't have as many bodies. You can't offer as many choices. And to the public, how it sort of hurts that we, that we talk about that, the collaboration time matters. That's something that traditionally teachers have time to do, either the fourth school, that school during lunch. It's a lot harder to do. And so it doesn't happen as often and it happens at a higher threshold. But I suspect every high school teacher at some point has looked at a kid's schedule and found one of their other teachers and dawned that they don't want to say it. And understand what's going on with this kid in your class and, and what do you know? Middle school can happen every day, while you're having lunch with your colleagues and all. So the, the other part that concerns me is that in, in backing it down, these things will go away or we're asking people to do things and not providing time for it to happen. And I think it's, when we were looking at a one-made middle school model before, I think seven, eight years ago, district is pretty emphatic that everything's gonna be the same. We're just not gonna have as many teachers and they're not gonna have kids on teams. I mean, I would much rather we, we really say how it hurts kids, how it hurts our ability to guide them through that time, rather than suggest, oh, we'll keep doing everything that really matters. We're just not gonna devote FTE and other resources to making it happen. I, I think it's fundamental, this honesty there, but it, I think in most school staffing, it's been such an issue. And I think in most school staffing, it's been such an issue that it started with free at the edges to begin. Don't go back to the junior high. That's not the worst thing. Although some people that are adults now will tell you what was.
I'm keeping an eye on the clock. I'm hoping that we.
She just put it in the chat. She wants to know if we move sixth grade in middle school. That apply to all schools programs and Dr. Stock did answer said most likely with most elementary schools with exceptions of charters. And those with different educational designs.
Ah, so like should get optionals.
Like optional or Montessori where part of their thing is they like combo classes or I guess it's part of the way they operate. Some of those might change, but we haven't clearly have not worked down to the each. Or unique things at this point.
Okay.
Until after we know if anything we've brought up is even going to move forward.
Can I ask if we can help the administration by taking a quick straw poll on support? For moving sixth grade to middle school? I guess I'll ask and say yes or no. So if you guys could show, raise your hand if you're online, if you support moving. Sixth grade to middle school. Do you think that might be driving it?
Kelly, this is Dave Donnelly. I support it.
Thank you, Dave. So it look, it sounds like.
I was going to try to jump in.
Go ahead.
Okay, I I just, I just want to say that I was remember involvement with middle schools when it came in, figuring with English and. Goes back quite a long ways. And the reason it was so big is because of the impact it had on. Drop out, graduation and keeping kids in. And it had a real favorable impact and. Just the assessment of what we're going to go through here. I just don't, I just want to. Weigh that in and not just make it a dollars and cents discussion, but a discussion about the impact it's going to have on outcome.
Yeah, no, I I hear you and I think that fellow board members share your interest in understanding. The impact on student outcomes that these different changes may have. I guess, yeah, I mean, I I sort of alluded to this yesterday. It would be my hope that maybe we could see some sort of. A spreadsheet saying what is the proposal? How is it going to cost? What is it? What will, how many students will that impact? What are the expected? Trade offs, thank you. That we might see with with any given proposal, but hopefully that gives you a little bit of guidance that. There might be a a board member, board support for pushing. Sixth grade to middle school. I do want to be cognizant that we have one item left on. Our agenda for today, so maybe we can pivot to item. Excuse me, item three on our act for update.
So it's been going very well. Everybody's been working very hard and. I just want to say thank you to everybody within the district who has been helping me. Because this is my first year. It has been very overwhelming. But we are estimated to complete the act for in the supplemental by November fifteenth. The single audit should be finished a few days after that. So then the next step will be at the November fifteenth board meeting. The auditors will get up, provide their summary of findings. I'll get up. Probably with Jim and we'll review the major points of the act for. You guys will approve it and we will send it to the state. And then sometime in December, I'm not sure which finance committee meeting is. We will do a deep dive, answer any and all questions you guys have and then go into detail into everything. So. They're short and sweet.
Great. Well, I can say that our next finance committee meeting will be December seventh. We pivoted.
Yeah.
A few of them to not align. Is that a bad day? Okay. Correlation, not causation. Yeah, go ahead, member Higgins. Okay, um. Well, I think that we could probably continue more questions, but in the interest of time and.
Well, I I think it's probably worth. I I don't think an hour and a half. We did, I think the board was in agreement that that we could schedule either more. Off cycle sessions certainly in December, at least one more maybe. Where we could have a couple of hours because I. I did something that's difficult and and. I could feel it, but Mark described it best. He said when we're, when we're sitting at a table and we're briefing the board. Even the people briefing are briefing, we're not working with. And if. When he's done this in the past where it's really difficult, when you put it in a round table. And everyone really is casual conversation. Without the Roberts rules, people, people ask questions differently. They answer questions differently. And I think if we can do something like that where we're. We're not listening to your question to figure out how to answer the question, but we're listening to what you need to know. To make decisions. And I think that kind of work session, considering the complexity of this. Like a retreat. Mark's done more like a retreat where. And Mark has done in the past, Mark, I don't know how long you went, if it was all nighters or anything like that, but I hope not. But it sounded like. It sounded like when everyone walked away, whether they agreed or not, everyone understood.
Carl, remember Jacobs, your hand was up?
Yeah, thank you, member Lessus. To Mr. Anderson's point, Margo and I actually talked this morning. And I think, I think we're in agreement that there probably needs to be a specific off schedule, maybe extended work session. I think member Higgins mentioned yesterday that potentially a Saturday might be best. And that we will still have a regular meeting time. I think some of that scheduling will be up to President Bellamy, of course, but I would support a more. Informal structure, especially as it comes down to the decision point where we're going to have to. Select which cuts to make and not if cuts can be made, so.
I agree. I work with that. I work with Amanda and with the superintendent's office. To to get that set up.
I I support that completely. I think that we need the time. To work together as a team where we're just not presenting it. You know, we're going to be going out to the public. Asking for advice and I'm reminding everybody, there's a good expression that says. Unneeded advice is unwanted advice. So we can't tell them, we want your options when we're going to tell them, we have none. We need to have a good discussion on all the options of what direction we're trying to go. And how it's going to impact kids and the the least that we can do. Thanks.
Yeah, I I think that a Saturday conversation would be great. It should probably take place after we finish all of our town halls. So that we're able to process things. So then just. But it'd be nice to do it before. Too far into December. I mean.
Somewhere before the twentieth, which is the final meeting before holiday break. I agree, I'm game. I I think.
Yeah. Maybe.
I mean, honestly, this, this is the first time where we've spent six months as a group. Trying to inform the community, get input. Come back with something and I just want to make sure the board isn't surprised. You know, some of those discussions that like state bond debt reimbursement and and fund balance. You can have those discussions in a thirty-second round of amendments. But then you never know what what all happened as a result, just that we came up with an answer. And those kind of discussions, I think. They just require time.
And can we, can I throw out a suggestion of Saturday, December tenth? Is that too late?
I'm good with that.
Is that far enough out and nobody's booked anything yet? Okay.
I just said I'd make any weekend work. All of it. Thanks.
Just food for thought, looking at a calendar.
Let, we'll work on it, guys. We'll, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a Saturday work session.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, we are at one o'clock. I bet you guys have an afternoon full of other meetings. Thank you for your time and your attention and willingness to engage with our questions.
Thank you.
All right, we need a mo- motion to adjourn. All right, great. Thank you.